...law and such. Before we go to town, why don't we have a hearing from some of the people that came to speak? And kind of get an idea of your thoughts, ideas, suggestions, just at least you can just hear from you what you all have. So if anybody will start at the middle table over there. Anybody wants to come up and speak? Go for it. The good thing about committees is it tends to be more casual, less informal, so we can have actually just discussion about the candidates and all this. If you wouldn't mind, when you do come up and speak, if you could just say your name, your address, and then let's...
This is being recorded. You're trying to be... Yeah. You want to speak?
Yeah, yeah, just, yeah, you're fine there. They usually crank them up if you're not close enough to anybody.
Okay. My name is Jerry Hoff, and I have a office building at the corner of Sherman and Dowson. We've been there about 20 years. And for probably the last two years, I have been trying to create a design for a new floor, a soft facing wall or building that faces the post office. Thinking that we have a lot of people that come in to the post office every day, and it would be kind of cool if there was... It's a big ugly brick wall, just a blank brick wall, and I thought it would be great if we could put some sort of mural. And I've seen all these beautiful murals in North Side and North Avondale, and of course downtown and along the river. And so I was trying to think of something along those lines. And so I came up with what I thought was a simple design. We're just going to paint a blue background, a sky blue background with a half a dozen flowers on it. There's no words, there's no people, it's real simple, but it's a very detailed kind of floral picture. And I was in the process of doing that when I got a phone call on my cellphone. And I looked down and I saw it was Mark Reeves' cellphone. So I answered and I said, "Hi, Mark, what's going on?" And he said, "One of my people telling me that you're painting a mural on your building." And I said, "Well, as a matter of fact, I'm on the scaffolding right now and in the process of painting. What can I do for you?" And he said, "Well, I don't really have anything against murals personally, but I need to tell you that murals are expressly forbidden anywhere within the city limits of Norwood, and you're going to have to paint over your mural." And I said, "Wow." I can't tell you how surprised I am. Never would have guessed that such a thing is not permitted. I mean, the Fun Factory is litterate, or was, I think it's about gone now, but the Fun Factory had been painted with this kind of oddball, just multi-colored graphic several years ago. And it just, it never dawned on me, having seen all these murals all over Hamilton County, that Norwood somehow was not permitting that kind of thing. So I told Mark I would stop what I was doing, and I put a blue tarp over the thing. Haven't taken my scaffolding down yet because I'm kind of hoping that maybe this can get figured out and we could actually finish. I have one of the flowers painted, about 90 percent. The other five are just blank spots in the middle of a blue wall where I hope to put five more flowers. That's the whole mural. The whole idea was because I thought it would be something attractive. It's, there's no words on it, I'm not pitching anything at all. It's just because I thought it would be a beautification of an otherwise blank brick wall. That's my story. That's why I'm here.
Okay. Well, thank you, Jerry. I appreciate you stopping by.
Yes, sir.
I have seen it.
No questions or anything like that?
I didn't see anybody?
No, I think your testimony is perfect, and I'm sorry that there was confusion on this. I know that you've advertised it at the Norwood Star, you mentioned that to me, so I'm sorry we didn't get to you sooner on that, but I do hope that we can figure out a way to let you get started at some point.
Well, I hope we can figure out a way to move forward. Thank you.
Thanks.
Don't be shy.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Elizabeth Hatchett, and we live on 1757 Weir Avenue. I haven't prepared anything to say, and I'm not the best impromptu speaker, but I'm here. And we, last time I was here, we were under contract for a building on the corner of Hopkins and Carter. And we bought it, and the renovation is going beautifully, thanks to Don McNeil and his crew. And we have boarded up a door on the side of the building in preparation for a big glorious mural facing Hopkins. Back up 10 years or so, when Sam and I moved to our home on Weir Avenue, we met our across-the-street neighbors, who's this beautiful older couple. And the gentleman of the couple told the most larger-than-life amazing stories. And he was an amazing man. Sadly, they have both passed away. But they have three children who still own homes in Norwood. And I was so inspired by one of the stories that he told me of something that happened in Norwood, that I recorded it. I recorded him telling the story. And I am in the process of designing a mural that would connect his story in picture form. And I'm still talking with his kids about this, so I don't want to give too much information. But I guess I share that because I think there's so much potential in allowing the arts in Norwood, specifically murals. And what I'd love to see happen would be that we could get to know each other better. Like, it could be a way that Norwood could know itself, that we could share these stories, and that we could share diverse voices within Norwood in a beautiful, uplifting, enriching way. And I really want to be a part of that. And I want to honor these stories. I think the design for the Lydia's House mural is along that same spirit of celebrating the people who live here, and celebrating the good that's going on in Norwood in the midst of so much that we could all be troubled by in our current atmosphere. It would just be lovely to be able to offer images that can uplift and help us know each other, and help us remember each other's humanity. And I want to be a part of that.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Gaver? I got a text that we're not on TV.
What's that?
Said I got a text that we're not on TV right now. Nothing is on the Norwood community television pages.
Tyler, if you can hear us, we're getting texts saying that we're not on TV. Step YI. Yes, ma'am?
Hi. So I'm supposed to give my name?
Name?
And that's it?
And your address, and the name of your firstborn, and blood type.
All right. Anyway, my firstborn is right there. My name is Julie Thompson, and I live on 4228 Ivanhoe.
You said Julia Thompson?
Julie.
Julie? Nice to meet you, Julie.
Okay. So, I didn't plan anything, I don't have anything eloquent, but Elizabeth is one of my best mates, and I was at her studio, which is corner of Carter and Mills, when she was talking about like, "Oh, actually, this isn't going to be really actually feasible to do this mural." And I just thought, "Okay, wait, what? Like, really? Are you serious? Like, okay, okay." And so I walked from Ivanhoe to Mills, and I just said, "Elizabeth, I'm going to walk back the same way I came, and I'm going to photograph murals that are already up in Norwood in the form of fabulous graffiti." That I just thought, if this is, this is people wanting to put effort and love and care and all this stuff, but there's... And I snapped pictures and sent them to her. It says, I'm not going to say it because my firstborn is right here, but it says, "F you." That's on the back of a house on Cleveland, so it's visible on Mills. Then on a house, as you turn up Ivanhoe, they've just got some stuff, I don't know, letters, whatever, on their fence and on their pavement. There's the house. So I just wanted to say, like, here's people who are actually wanting to counterbalance some of the negativity that seems as if it's not being checked on. So I think it could be a really strong public way to say, "There's also beauty here. There's this, but look over here. This is really lovely." So, that's all.
Thank you. Thanks, I appreciate you taking the time. Yeah. Anyone else?
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Leslie Stevenson. I live at 4303 Allison Street. And reflecting on what I just heard, I am glad that we're now all on the same page, that murals can add beautification to a city. Sounds like in Hamilton County, we might be one of the few municipalities that aren't joining in with that. They can facilitate storytelling. I love that Elizabeth brought that up. The project she was speaking of is the one I learned of when I was approached in August of 2018 about helping to develop code for the city of Norwood. And my personal story is around storytelling and the power of murals. I had visited Union Terminal for the first time when I was a high school student. I was visiting because there was an exhibit on King Tut. And I actually really like Egyptian history, but what I didn't have any connection to was the street, Escher Charles. It's right there when you're on your way to Union Terminal. And it wasn't until I saw a mural that said, "This is Escher Charles." I even knew who the person was. It was the mural on the wall that taught me, "Oh, this man was boxer, and he was pretty good, and he's from here." No clue. And so I'm really grateful that there's hope still and momentum to connect people to the places where they have impact. Julie talked about mitigating blight, and how for some graffiti is an expression that, while it may be considered misdirected, it's still an expression, and we have an opportunity to really lift up and support residents who want to use their skills, their skills and their talents to bring beauty and help mitigate blight. I saw Jerry's work. I live down the block, and so when I'm walking around Norwood, I loved it. Sunflowers are my favorite. And so when I thought it was going to happen initially, I thought, "Man, this is awesome." And it's been hard to try and explain to people why beauty's not allowed in your city. One of the things I want to rehearse is the local organization Artworks would like to do programming in our city. And there are private investors who would like to help facilitate that. But if we don't have code that supports that, we lose out on private investment. We lose out on opportunity to engage our youth, as well as our adults who are eager to bring their talents forward and help change the narrative in Norwood. The last thing I want to say is I've shared with you all some resources we used in our last council term. I hope you'll revisit them to see some of the thinking at the time. I'm going to also write to you again, there are resources, if you do a quick Google search, to see that tourism can be positively affected by murals, to also see how different types of abatement structures can be positively impactful for a city by incorporating murals. And so I hope that as we continue to revisit the existing code, as well as take into account funding and development opportunities, you'll recognize that for those of us who are here, we really think this could be powerful for all of us. Thanks.
Thank you. I know, I got a message today from Mary Ellen Mitchell, and she's got some childcare issues, says she said she'd be running late, so hopefully she gets here before we wrap up on this, so that we can hear from her as well. I know, I think she, I think she represents the Lydia House there, if I'm not correct. Is that correct? Okay. And so that way we can hear from her as well. I really appreciate those of you that took time to come tonight and speak. Yeah, Sam, come on up.
Is there another one?
Absolutely.
Right. Right. Tag out on chalk.
And maybe this will serve as a bit of a segue. So Sam Hatchett, I'm connected to Elizabeth Hatchett by marriage, same address, 1757 Weir Avenue. I'm, first of all, a huge supporter of murals. I think that we should join the collective crowd. We should not just be an enclave governmentally. But I think that being an enclave artistically is to our detriment. And I'll be very honest with you, I am so far mentally beyond the question of whether, right? And so much into the, I really want to have the discussion of how, right? I think we need a full discussion, right, of how to legally accomplish this, given that I haven't heard anyone speak against this other than kind of a, I don't want to be unkind, but an innuendo-laden statements about, well, you know, we don't want certain kinds of content, right? And so you're opening Pandora's Box when you allow freedom of expression, right? Implicitly, that means, well, it's better just to remain silent. It's better to stifle this kind of expression than to deal with what might come out of people's collective imagination. So let's talk about that. And let's talk about how murals are pre-expression, how that interacts with First Amendment rights, and what that means for having a responsible ordinance around it. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stan. Apparently still not broadcasting either, by the way. Tyler, we're still not on TV. Just FYI.
I'm messaging him and just make sure it's being recorded at least.
So again, I appreciate those of you that come out tonight, and you're right, we, if we're going to proceed down this avenue, we need to figure out how, you know, not, you know, whether we do. I think, I'm in favor of murals. I would love to see murals. My idea is that we would need to set some parameters on where they could be, you know, like, let's see, yeah, Elizabeth, you get your studio there, which I think is very cool. You opened up, you unboarded those windows, and it kind of took me back to my childhood because I grew up on Carter, you know, at the other end of Carter, but I remember. And so that was, I mean, I noticed that immediately. I'm like, windows are bad. And it's just little things like that that you notice in your neighborhoods, changes that are, you know, really open your eyes. So I appreciate that. One of my parameters would be, we would need to get permission from those other properties that are close, that are like within view, because it's going to affect their property values. It could, whether it's up or down, whichever. So, I mean, that would just be one of my suggestions that we would throw in. You know, how do we go about choosing, you know, the type of work do we set aboard? I'm a little frustrated because I reached out to Artworks and, back in February, and asked them to come to a meeting, and they said they came to a meeting last council and didn't feel like it was beneficial to their time, and, you know, if we needed something, just call them. And I was a little frustrated that we kind of got that response, because it felt like they were just like, "Nah, we're not going to, you know, mess with that again." And so I was a little disheartened at that response, because I would have liked to have heard from them to see what their thoughts are and how to get things started. As I mentioned, we have Tim Gary here from our law department, and just wanted to get what, you know, not just what our code says, but what the law says, and, you know, what that means to us as we consider this. So, Tim, if you don't mind?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The code is designed to be content neutral. The code was the product of a lot of hours of reviewing the old code, of adopting new code. It included hours by the former Assistant Law Director, then Law Director Chris Brown, the City Planner Greg Oros, the Building Commissioner at the time, Jerry Stoker, Mark Reeves, who is the zoning administrator, who I know that you invited to this committee meeting, and I know, I mean, neither he nor I have any particular problems with murals, but we do have problems with murals if they won't, if regulating them would result in successful attack on our sign ordinance. And Keith Moore, the Law Director, and me, and we spent hours going through to comply with a U.S. Supreme Court decision that was written by Justice Clarence Thomas in 2015 called Reed versus Town of Gilbert. And Gilbert, Arizona, is a town that had a number of categories of signs, and it was very content-laden, just as our last sign code was content-laden. But in order to, and mind you, the U.S. Supreme Court, which rarely agrees on much, agreed nine to nothing in this case, with three of the justices offering concurrent opinion, but they essentially agreed that you can't have content-based restrictions because content-based restrictions are going to be reviewed by a court using so-called strict scrutiny, which is the highest scrutiny the court will give to a matter, to determine whether there's any compelling state or government interest in the restriction. Okay? So what does that mean as applied? Our zoning code doesn't permit painted signs. And we don't have the right legally to hand down criteria upon which we judge one kind of mural versus another. In other words, the city, and none of its boards or anything related to them can be the art police. And so if some murals are accepted, then all murals have to be accepted, including, you know, graffiti murals, and coarse language, and whatever and whatever. There's not the chance to, you know, put the genie back in the bottle. And we thought, and we think, and the council, two councils ago, agreed that this was an appropriate way to restrict, to have a legally compliant sign code. And it has not been successfully attacked or seriously challenged at all so far. And I know, for example, Mr. Bonzel was on that council that passed this code just about three years ago. And it's now part of our codified ordinances. Although the council can choose to do what in the world it wants to do, I can't urge the council to do that because of the basic problem of not being able to in any way regulate what would be the content of those murals. And I understand, I mean, I love art too. I've got books and books of art at home. I've studied it in college, but you just, I don't think you can count on Norwood for the foreseeable future to have all of its owners making good judgments as to what is art and what's not, especially if they're, if they happen to be angry, or frustrated, or whatever. We're going to find angry, frustrated murals, things that may not be appropriate for, you know, the community, frankly.
I had a question for you.
Sure.
When you said, like, we can't put the genie back in the box, like, in my head, there might be a road where we open up a mural code, which would be different to the sign code, knowing, you know, open come on or sort of thing, knowing, eyes wide open, that there's a possibility for things to get abused. But the lens of doing that would be people who are upset or wanted to do something that would be, you know, "F you," as, they're probably going to do that anyway. And the people that are doing murals, in my mind, maybe shared by others, are probably going to do something with a little bit of thought, just because it's expensive and takes a bit of time to do a mural. And if we were to go two years down the road, and the bad so apparent, you know, so obviously outweighed the good, then couldn't we just go back to what we have right now? Like, what? When you said, like, we, yeah, we'd open the door to letting things in, but if we, if I'm wrong, and things went south in two years, really south, we could always just go back, and we'd be in exactly the same boat, I imagine. Or would we not be in the same boat? I'm trying to get the legal response to that.
Well, whatever would have already occurred, you can't...
Be undone, yeah.
Can't recall that. You know, let's say, let's say a group of people, you know, put up murals that have cuss words on them, or, you know, whatever.
Sure.
That's, that's not going to, I mean, we wouldn't be in a position to change that if you wanted to allow that kind of activity.
We wouldn't be able to change that even two years after, and that's in my...
You could change it back so that they couldn't do it, you know, going forward.
That's what I'm trying to ask.
Yeah. But no, you couldn't, you know, you couldn't require that they paint over...
No, be like grandfathered in. Like, that's, that's...
That would be done, yeah. Like, a lot of other things are grandfathered in.
I understand.
Yeah. So before our, before this code, the sign code changed, other things would have been grandfathered in.
Sure.
I'd like to say, I think hundreds, if not thousands, of communities across the country have somehow managed to open Pandora's Box without the world caving in on them. We're completely surrounded by one of those cities. There are beautiful, literally dozens of beautiful murals surrounding us. So I believe it's a little disingenuous to say that there's just no way around that. We can say that we don't want to take the way around it, but I don't believe that there's no way around it. For me, I want to make making a mural as easy as possible, because it's something that beautifies our city and enriches our city. And I think it could be as simple as redefining what a mural is within our code. We have, we've defined dozens and dozens of different kinds of signs that we will not allow. I don't see why we can't define another kind of sign, which I don't believe a mural is. A mural does not, I mean, I know that a sign is not meant for advertising, sometimes they convey messages, but very rarely. I would suggest potentially adding a new kind of sign that is a mural that is allowed. It could be a conditional allowance. Many, 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 many signs that we have in this city are under conditional allowance. So somebody has to look at them and say, "It's okay for you to put up that sign." It either meets our code, or the neighbors don't mind it, or whatever. So we already allow for this kind of review in one way or another on the signs that we already allow. I don't see why we can't just allow murals. And to be perfectly honest with you, again, art is in the eye of the beholder. I'm sure if you examined every single mural in the country, you might find a handful that you find distasteful. But that doesn't mean everybody finds them distasteful. And I don't think that we have to, we can't look at that. This, we're not, we're not art police. That is what a mural is for. It's meant for public beautification. I personally am frustrated because we spent two years trying to figure out how to do this, and, and we had, you know, I think we had an administration that didn't want to help us out on it, and we had building department... help us out on it, and we had building departments that didn't want to help us out on it. But I think now that we might be in a slightly different place. And since this is just an ordinance that codifies these things, we make ordinances that codify other things. And I'm more than willing to make an ordinance that changes this ordinance to help codify murals into existence in this city, if that's what it takes. I would much rather it be a little easier and just say, yeah, of course, it's a mural. Murals also are a significant investment. Paint ain't cheap. I don't, how much, do you know about how much money you would invest in the paint to cover a wall, the size of your wall? Yes, please.
I'm using the best paint I can give it, $5 a gallon. I've got eight different colors so far, so a few hundred dollars.
Okay, well, that's pretty good.
I mean, I worked on artworks where we had a team working on a spectacle mural, but it was $30,000 to $40,000.
Right, that's, and when you're doing murals that last and that are artistic or aren't worthy, you're in the tens of thousands of dollars of investment. That alone is part of your check. Somebody really wants, really needs to want to do what they're doing to invest in time and money into it, which is what I said. Personally, we spent two years trying to figure out if this was okay. We all think it's okay. My question to this committee is, what do we have to do to make it happen? Quickly.
May I ask a question to Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
You said disingenuous. What's your definition of that, and what were you referring to?
The fact that, that you didn't feel that we could change what we have here to make murals okay.
That's not what I said. I'm saying that the law, the Supreme Court of the United States requires content-neutral sign codes, and that's what we've produced.
Right. And I'm suggesting that the murals could also be a content-neutral sign that we allow people to put up. So you're getting hung up on the fact that you want to control what people put into their murals, correct?
No, I don't want to control what people put into their murals.
But that's what the law wants to control.
Pardon?
But that's what the code, if you allow murals, then you have to allow it to be content neutral, correct?
The code has to be content neutral to be enforced.
Right. So the problem then becomes, people get nervous about allowing murals because they can't control the content, because if you allow murals, then you have to be content neutral, and you have to be okay with what people want to put up as a mural. So what we've done, in essence, is say, okay, we don't want to be okay with what people put up as a mural, so we won't allow murals. That's the issue here. If it's, if you have to be okay for a sign to be content neutral, then we have to be okay with murals being content neutral. And that's my position.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I personally, I definitely think that the, yeah, the question here is, are we okay with not being able to regulate the content? And if we are, if, and honestly, I think potentially, maybe we make a motion on Council floor tonight and get the rest of the people's opinions, too, but if the council's okay with that, and they're okay with potentially the risk of something that could be considered offensive, or could be considered something politically that they don't agree with, if we're okay with that risk, and I think, I agree with Mr. Thompson, I think we move straight forward. And I think I'm okay with that risk. I think that it's shown through the other municipalities in our area that we are seeing some really great content that's getting produced. I do understand the Law Department's concerns about the sign code, and I'm the only council member that was on that council, and I can, we had no contemplation that the sign code would prohibit or affect murals in any way. Not that, I mean, there was just no thought of that. Nobody had talked to us about murals at the time, so we weren't looking at that. So, I mean, yes, we did approve the sign code by the recommendation of the Law Department at the time, but it wasn't to necessarily, I guess that's the same Law Department, excuse me, but it wasn't necessarily to prohibit murals. I just wanted to make sure that was corrected. And then, once we figure out, if we do determine that we want to move forward, then I think we can start looking at where, do we want murals to be? Do we want them to only to be in neighborhood business districts? Do we want them only to be in industrial zones? You know, where might we allow them? And start having those conversations about how we move forward. I do know that other cities, though, and I still don't understand these other cities are doing it, but there's, like, I looked at Toledo, they have a art commission, and basically, they get a mural application, and the art commission works with the person, I guess this board helps, works with the applicants and helps to make their project as good as possible. Maybe they aren't allowed to regulate based on content, as Mr. Gary said. However, I mean, I think there's just ways that we can do this, and ways that we can make it right. So I do hope that we decide to move forward and then figure out how we're going to do that.
Personally, and I'm with you, but then I put on this other cap, and it's a cap that I absolutely hate in my personal life, and that, the cap of being a government official, of playing the what-if game. You know, in government, everything is what-if. That's why all of our laws are based, because what if something happens, we need to be protected from that. That's my only concern, is as Julie attested to the graffiti that she noted, that's against the law, and we need to go and have that removed. If we have a mural thing, we can't go tell those people to remove that graffiti in bad words, because that's their art expression, and as long as it's their property, I mean, you can't go doing it on somebody else's, obviously. But that would be the same thing, that, that's the kind of things I'm concerned about. Now, does that outweigh the fact that that's a small percentage of people that are wanting to do the bad stuff versus the vast amount of people that want to do nice projects that you really put money into? That's, that's one of the things that I'm weighing right now. A question I have for you, Mr. Gary, is, does this apply only, that, does that, the law that you were speaking of, is that only to murals or art in general? Do you recall?
Well, what was before the court in the Reed case, Reed versus Town of Gilbert case, was regarding a sign code.
Okay.
But we couldn't regulate art in general as to, as well as, you know, some other forms of expression, because that would, that would probably not survive what the Supreme Court and other courts refer to as their strict scrutiny.
Right.
In other words, everybody values the First Amendment.
Right.
And, and because they value the First Amendment, they hold, they hold efforts to restrict it up to strict scrutiny, is what it boils down to.
Okay.
And Mr. Gav.
Yes.
I totally hear you about the what-if, and it probably crossed all of our minds at some point, just because we're sitting in these seats, but what makes me kind of still lean forward is the fact that, because we're kind of last, or probably dang near last, to be considering potentially moving forward on this, we get to live with all these examples around us, like the Lee Hamilton, or some parts of Cincinnati we can even see really closely. So it's kind of like, there is a what-if, but I imagine that most people aren't spraying graffiti of F-U on their own house. And if they are, it's kind of weird. I bet that's not happening too much. And, and so, and what we do see more of, and so that'd be illegal anyway, is my point, you know what I mean, right? If you spray paint somebody else's house, you can't do that.
Yeah, you can't do that. No, you can't do that.
Yeah, so that's not, that's not really what we're regulating.
Let's put it this way, the other person could insist that you
Yeah, so we're not really regulating that. And so it's just like, I feel just at a very high level without, and I think it's important to not overthink things, that's a dangerous thing to say, and it's just kind of like, what's probably going to happen? Most probably, those worst-case scenarios aren't happening, as evidenced by the cities that have already kind of leaned forward on this. So.
Yes.
And I just want to say, so, the mural definition can be construed in a way that graffiti is not considered a mural. So, I mean, you know, you could put a minimum size on it. There's other, I mean, there's things that you can do that are content neutral that would not allow somebody to put F-Norwood on the side of their, on the side of their house. I mean, that's, I can't imagine that that would not be the case.
I don't think you can regulate that.
You, you said you can't regulate content. You can regulate size, can't you?
Yes, but I'm not sure what you mean by size.
Size of it. So like, let's just say that we require that murals be at least 10 feet tall and 10 feet wide.
Okay.
But then that would make
What would keep me from putting, you know, two-foot letters in it?
I mean, I've read, or, I guess I'm just, the thing that I'm kind of frustrated on myself is that, I mean, I've read other mural ordinances that try to exclude graffiti, and I feel like there's a way that to do that.
Can I, can I ask when those ordinances, any of them were passed?
Well, I mean, the Toledo one was 2007, the one that I was looking
Okay, that was before this decision.
Can you name, what is the decision? Do you have the
Yes, it's Reed versus Town of Gilbert, Arizona, and it was decided June the 18th of 2015 by the Supreme Court of the United States unanimous decision.
So another thing that can be done is you can regulate based on location. So we could say that we don't want it in an R1, R2, or R3 residential district. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So I don't think we have to worry about, and if we did that, we wouldn't have to worry about people necessarily putting it on the side of their house.
Well, except that there's so many zones in Norwood that are right next to one another. You know, the R2 is right next to the Neighborhood Business District, et cetera. I mean, all you got to do is go to the building department, look at the zoning map, and say, oh, my, you know, there's a house next to a bar, et cetera. So you could put that, well, we're not blessed with lots and lots of land and acreage and ability to set off between land uses, so.
Thank you. My point is just that I feel like we can start, like, we can work on some of these what-ifs that are out there, and I feel like we can start putting appropriate constraints, potential location, and size to help to offset that. And then other cities, too, I think, also require permits for them, just to make sure that the property owners get them permission, to make sure that it's in an appropriate zoning district. I mean, it may not be able to do content, but that's another thing that, one more level that somebody have to take, that I just don't see people just spray painting F-Norwood or whatever.
Yeah, this is Thompson.
Firstly, Mr. Gary, I just want to apologize for saying disingenuous.
Oh, that's okay. It's one of my
I misunderstood the bit of it, so I don't
It's one of my hot-button
It's fine. It's fine. Second, I want to agree with Mr. DiNardo here. When, when you're asking yourselves the what-ifs, what you do in business is you benchmark. You look at what everybody else is doing, and you see what works, and you see what doesn't. So I suggest that's what we do.
I like the idea, you know, I kind of fall in line with Mr. Bonzel here, is, you know, talking about, as I was talking about before, we can set up whatever parameters we want. We can do whatever we want and change our code. It's just the weather, and I appreciate Mr. Gary coming tonight to speak. I mean, hopefully, no one takes this out on you personally. You're just saying, this is what the law is, this is the opinion of our law department, so therefore, if somebody does challenge it, he's, he's going to be the one that has to go and try to defend us on that. So he's, that's why he's, that's why I asked him tonight, you know, what's, what's our law department's opinion on this, and this is what, you know, he's come with. So we could put anything we want to, and, and just hope that, and I'm guessing that's what Cincinnati and Toledo and all these other communities, I'm guessing that that's probably, they've just, no one's challenged, you know, to say, you have to allow this because you allow that. And so my teaming with Mr. Bonzel here was, you know, if we do set parameters to where, as far as locations and things like that, because if, you know, if you have a house and you've lived there for, you know, 40 years, and then suddenly somebody moves in next door, and they want to paint a mural on the side of that that faces your house, man, that would be tough, you know? And then, you know, you'd say, well, I'm just going to sell my house and leave, and, you know, how easy is it to do that? Those are the kind of what-ifs, I think, is those people in neighborhoods. But we have had murals, obviously, they've been torn down because the Fun Factory had a big mural on the side of it. There's a couple other painted signs that have been up, but they've been up for a lot of years, and there's nothing we can do about that. We can start whatever conversation as far as developing an ordinance that is specific to murals, and how we want to put whatever regulations or stipulations in there, and go forth and put it up for a vote, and see, you know, how the rest of council feels, and what their thoughts are on that, if, you know, whether they want to take that risk or not, that's
Can we try to
I'm not aware that
We've got a couple questions as well. Good, Mr. Gary.
Yeah, I'm not aware that Cincinnati's had much litigation concerning murals, but they absolutely have had lawsuits filed against them and won against them as to newspaper boxes and these bench billboards, and so on and so forth. And they lose a lot of money in damages and attorney's fees from time to time because they take hard lines on, you know, the use of signage in the city of Cincinnati.
Yeah.
And the other thing that I'd like to caution you about is that some cities have been putting, you know, have had murals in place for decades, including Cincinnati, and this, you know, this decision is five years old next week. Okay? So not everybody's been operating under it for, you know, for a very, for very long. I don't know who's done new codes and who hasn't. What I'm satisfied is that our code as written is, is very well fortified, put it that way, in terms of content neutrality. And again, we had, you know, three lawyers and three zoning administrators, planners, et cetera, go through this, each frequently by themselves, you know, to identify the content neutrality stuff. Now, if you want to make some changes to this ordinance, that's fine. We'll try to work with you as best we can. But we don't want to be the suggesters of all, you know, all that is good here. In other words, if you don't, if you want stuff in particular districts, zoning districts, say so. If you want size, say so. But we're not going to be able to effectively regulate content
Okay.
by a board or anything like that, saying, oh, yeah, this goes, this stays, et cetera.
Okay.
Nobody can, nobody has, you know, arbitrary authority to make that call.
Right. Okay. There was a couple, yes, Elizabeth?
I just wanted to share the thoughts of, you know, that was something that Sam and I, when we were combing through the different community meetings and seeing, oh, this is, the issue here is this court case and how nobody would be able to regulate content. And we're thinking about that, and thought, well, I guess you have to weigh what fear is worse? The fear that somebody would decide that they want a 10 feet by 10 feet offensive message on a building, or the fear that by not allowing murals, we would lose out on funding opportunities, on youth participation opportunities, on economic development opportunities, on having an interesting story to tell of the neighborhood because of the arts? And for me, that second fear is a greater fear. And also, I was thinking about, so I'm not fabulous at paying attention to various conversations that happen in Facebook, but there was one a couple years ago on a Norwood page where some folks were expressing frustration that there was, one of our neighbors had a Confederate flag in their yard. And they were talking about how some members of our community were really hurt by that, by them choosing to have a Confederate flag in their yard. choosing to have a Confederate flag in their yard. And it led to conversation. And eventually, the people who had the Confederate flag didn't want to convey the message that the people who were hurt were hearing from that flag. So, I guess I think, in the unlikely scenario of someone wanting to invest in a really big mural with an offensive message, what if it becomes an opportunity for dialogue, and redemption, and helping that person understand the perspective of other people who live around them? I mean, that's way messier than just saying, no murals allowed, but I think it could be potentially more growth-inducing for a community to have conversations about things like that.
Yeah, that's a good point. Greg, go on. Julie, do you have a question?
Me?
Yeah.
Well, since I have the space, I guess, I just, my thought is, is it's like, there is already offensive things on the walls, so why don't we start putting beautiful things on the walls? I mean, it's that, I made those images, I think it said Mark's tip, and they've been on there for months and months and months and months and months prior to that. So, if it's already there, let's start counterbalancing the trash, the trash talk.
Yeah. It's a valid point. And, okay, Sam?
Just to reemphasize, I think it's been said before, that, you know, we're not breaking new ground, right? We're breaking very, very old ground. Ground has been broken time and time again. Many other places allow murals. There's not, there's not this huge number of various offensive murals that are just shattered, and it's very much strange. And to say that, to say that, well, given that you can't regulate content, you're not going to like the content that you get in Norwood. Do we believe that? Or do we believe that there's, there's not an essential difference between people who live in the boundaries of Norwood and people who live outside of the boundaries of Norwood who are allowed to invest in murals? If there's no essential difference, then I think, again, benchmarking is the way to go. Like, let's see what happens, right? Like, are people in Norwood more prone to offensive language, offensive speech in their art? Or are we basically like everyone else, and we want a beautiful community?
Leslie, you have something?
Yes, I did want to just remind you all that you have committee members, you have in your inbox drafted guidelines on the how. They were shared with artworks, and they gave their feedback. That's how we got to them. It was not vetted by the planning commission. It was not vetted by all of council. Artworks probably engaged in three or four meetings, including some phone calls with myself and Greg Boros at the time. And so, I can empathize with them, saying, you don't want to give more time if the law's not changing. It takes a lot of time to demonstrate what murals can do. And when you're doing it based on funds that are raised, you want to be really judicious. I don't hear any disagreement over the fact that we will not regulate content. I think we all are clear, free speech is real important to maintain. And so, again, going back to the how, I believe if Mary Ellen were here, she could give you some insights into how residents were directed in the absence of changing the zoning amendment to allow them to perform mural. And it's been a mess. It's been a runaround. It's been frustrating. It's been duplicitous. And that, to me, has felt disingenuous, to say that the way forward is to not have a way forward. We'll figure it out step by step, because we can do better. Norwood is better than that. I do agree, public discussion could happen, and that would be really helpful. The regulation that you have put forth, neighborhood meetings would have to happen. Not to vet content, but so that neighbors would be required to talk to each other about what's about to happen in your eyesight. It's no different than when folks propose zoning amendments right now. There's notices that go out by law to the adjacent property owners. There's already vehicles in our city for discussion. We have a community coalition. We have a Norwood Together community council meeting. We have committee meetings of council, so there's no reason discussion cannot take place. For those who didn't see it, I will remind you that there was an ask, and there had been agreement to have a public hearing, notice to the public through all available channels, or an evening town hall to have discussion on this topic, that never happens. I think if you're interested in vetting the how that this committee and the rest of council drafts, then you should have feedback to recognize, are people really afraid, or do we just need to get started?
Okay, thank you. So, we're coming up on 7 o'clock here. As far as this committee is concerned, and how we report out, we can report out tonight and say we want to, we want to start investigating how we go about writing an ordinance for the approval of murals. I love the public town hall meeting, and I'm willing to call one of those that we could put out, and to give both sides, everyone a voice, to come and speak, and, you know, just let us know what their thoughts and feelings are on murals themselves, to see what happens there. And, but in that, in the meantime, we could start, you know, whoever would, you know, however we do that, start the process of working on that ordinance, if that's what, how you want to report that out tonight. Yes?
Yeah. So, yeah, I definitely want to ensure that the report out indicates that, if you're okay with it, that we want to move forward, and that the only, the question now is how. It's not that, are we going to, is this committee going to propose something to council? I think we've determined by this point that we are. I think it's just what will be determined. So, I really just want to, you know, if we're okay with saying that and stating that, I'd like us to state that, and just put that stake out there, that we definitely want to move forward. We just need to figure out now exactly what the ordinance is.
Leslie, you had another follow-up?
Just to be distinct, I don't think you should call a town hall until you've drafted legislation. I think you've heard from people, and you yourself decided you want to move forward, so I think you should call it when you can get feedback on your plan for how. Not another conversation for should be.
Yeah, and I'll just say too, I mean, we've now had two meetings that have been noticed to the public. I mean, I'm not saying they've been advertised to every address in Norwood, but, I mean, all the feedback that I've gotten via email, in person, and at meetings like this, I mean, I think we already know that we do want to move forward. So, I do agree with Ms. Stevenson. If we're going to hold any kind of meeting, it's basically just to vet out, are there any concerns with the ordinance that we end up drafting?
Right, right.
But I do think that, yeah, we should have that. I think it's a good call.
Anything further? Anything further from you folks, Mr. Gary?
No, thank you.
Mr. Gary, I really appreciate you coming tonight and sharing with us. And again, hopefully, no one takes Mr. Gary's comments tonight as personal. He's representing our law department, which in their spot is to try to, you know, make sure that we're protected. And if we would like to take that chance and, you know, test the waters, that's on us, not him, all right? Eric?
Yeah. If I'm right or wrong, I hope you correct me, but my interpretation of, like, what you've taught me is that going through some sort of panel or approval board is probably against the intent of how you've worded the sign, the sign language, the language of like sign laws.
I think you could probably have a board reviewing it, but they probably wouldn't want to be in a position of a thumbs up or a thumbs down kind of a concept. I mean, it could be, you know, too discussed, too refined, too persuaded, too cajoled, to whatever, but the point at which you're saying, we like that one, we don't like that one, is the crux of the problem.
Thanks, Matt. Yeah, I was bringing that up. You have helped me a lot to find this. But for this committee, you said, what do we want? I think we should probably give ourselves a timeline, more specifically deadline, on, all right, by the end of July, we should have a skeleton. By the end of August, we should communicate that skeleton. And I think that would just add to, one, accountability for us to do that, because what's difficult is we can't go make the skeleton outside of the four of us together, which, that kind of sucks, but like, it would require doing it together. So...
Well, I think what we can do is, Mr. Thompson's already, you know, made mention, he's willing to kind of put the, because all it is, is drafting the ordinance, and then send in kind of that rough draft to the law department to actually put it in legalese form, and then we bring it to council. So, I mean, that could be as soon as, you know, you know, give him a month. But what he does is, he sends that, he gives that to Laura to send to us, and see if we want to add, subtract from it before it gets sent to law. And then, I mean, we, it can be, we can do it a whole lot sooner
Okay.
is what I'm saying, is all we need is the draft. And if Mr. Thompson is willing to do that, or at least start that process, so you throw it out, here's some, the bullet points that I'm looking at, and we, you know, and then Laura sends that to us, we can then look at it, make, you know, any changes, or, you know, our own opinions on those kind of things. And then, it goes to them, they draft it, it comes to council, then at which point, we would have a public hearing that we could call for that, and have our three meetings, and, and see what happens from there.
Yeah, I just want to comment quickly on that. Yeah, I think that's, fine. I would just put a deadline, I would say that I'd love to see that skeleton, though, like, by the end of June, if we could. Whether that be Mr. Thompson created, or it gets created by committee, or what have you. But if we could get a skeleton by the end of June, I think that would probably be better, because I think we can then discuss it, talk about it, refine it, whatever. That'd be my preference.
We can also have a skeleton, you know, if somebody puts a skeleton together, then we can meet as committee
Yeah.
and go over it. And then, so, as soon as that happens, if you let me know, then I can call, go ahead and call a meeting, and we can, we can go over it, and then from there, ship it over. So...
From the standpoint of the Ohio Open Meetings Law, I greatly prefer that somebody come up with a skeleton, and then, and then you guys meet on it and talk about it in open session.
Okay. Thank you for that, that point as well. But, so, yeah, so all you got to do is bring it, or, you know, just start it. Let me know that, hey, I think I got a good outline, and we'll call a meeting, we'll discuss it in committee, and then we can report it out of committee and go from there, and have it drafted, or however we go from there.
Sounds good.
Super. Anybody else? Thank you all again for coming tonight. I really appreciate it. I mean, there is a lot of passion about this. I've had personally a handful that were against it. I try to encourage people to come and speak, but sometimes, you know, they don't, they don't, they're not comfortable with that. But, so, but I appreciate you taking your time to come tonight. Thank you very much. All right, with that being said, we'll go ahead and call this Economic Development Committee. We'll close this meeting. Thank you.